First item is HCD updates. Ms. Ferriero.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Administration, and my colleagues. I'd like to say first and foremost, Happy New Year. Today is the first day of the fiscal year, so I couldn't think of a better time to be here in front of you, talking about HCD, some of the things that we have going on, and what we can expect in the next year or so. Before we get started, I'd just like to have our HCD staff, if you could stand up for a little bit, we have some folks here, and I'd like to really recognize them and give them a hand of applause.
No, Commissioner Rouse, that was not for you walking in.
I'd like to recognize our HCD staff. We are about to go through a lot of different variations of different projects and activities and initiatives that we have in HCD, and we have a very limited staff with very limited resources, but they are doing an incredible job, and I wouldn't be here, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them, and I'm just really honored to be able to represent them and the work that they're doing. So, of course, when you think of housing and community development, the first thing that comes to mind, of course, is housing, and that's our primary mission. And so, we think about housing, of course, our main goal is to develop and preserve affordable or workforce housing. So, how do we do that? We have a variety of development loans that we provide to nonprofit and for-profit organizations to develop housing. We also provide, the city provides, development incentives in the form of waivers and/or expedited fees, I'm sorry, expedited permitting, and a variety of incentives to incentivize workforce and affordable housing. We have a residential rehabilitation program that provides home repair assistance, up to $50,000 for eligible residents in the city of West Palm Beach. We have a home purchase assistance program that provides up to $60,000 for first, I'm sorry, for down payment and closing cost assistance. We have a tenant-based rental assistance program. This program is administered countywide. We receive about $3 million on an annual basis to provide tenant-based rental assistance to eligible households. We also have a pilot reentry program. This program is a partnership with other organizations such as The Lord's Place with Palm Beach County, and this program provides rental assistance up to a year for individuals who are exiting the criminal justice system. And the purpose of this program was to determine if stable housing has an effect on recidivism. Did I say that correctly? Because I always mess it up. Yes? Okay. We have a housing stabilization program. This program provides first and last month's rent to individuals who are homeless and/or individuals who are, were preventing them from becoming homeless. From a community development perspective, we provide funding for community development improvements, or community facility improvements, excuse me. We'll talk about some of those projects there. We've provided funding for demolition and any infrastructure improvements that may be required in eligible areas of the city. Social and homeless services, that's a huge undertaking that HCD has. Of course, we provide all of the homeless outreach and case management services citywide. We'll talk a little bit more about that through our Vickers House Division. We have a home rebound program, which provides a one-way ticket to homeless individuals who'd like to connect with their families in other areas of the country. Of course, our mobile health clinic, we have a clinic that is stationed in various areas of the city, particularly in Curry Park, two times a week. They're also stationed in St. Anne, two times a week, as well as The Lord's Place. We have a program, the serving, our seniors program, which provides assistance to eligible seniors in West Palm Beach that may have some sort of hardship. We provide numerous referral services to various organizations, countywide, to individuals that may need services, and of course, we do a variety of community outreach and different initiatives throughout the city. One of the big things that HCD has taken over has been real estate management of all city-owned properties. So, that could mean we have identified a majority, I'm sorry, numerous properties throughout the city that we have either sold or donated to nonprofit organizations for the development of housing. In the instances where we sold these properties, the funds generated from the sale have been put in the city's Housing Trust Fund for the development of affordable housing. One of the things that we also have is, we manage the city leases, all of the leases that the city currently has in place, we manage all of those as well. One of the things that we also don't often talk about, which is a majority of the work that we do in HCD, is, of course, program administration. We oversee three federal funding programs, Home, CDPG, and HOPWA. We oversee a state program, the SHIP program, and we oversee the city's Housing Trust Fund and the city's Real Estate Management Fund. All of those have a completely different variations of what you can, what you can't do, very complicated programs to oversee. I've actually had a colleague of ours state that our business is one of the most complicated in the city, and I would tell you that, I wouldn't doubt that. We have a complex business, but we are happy to be able to provide that on behalf of the city.
Ms. Ferriero, could you briefly explain what home is, what HOPWA is, what SHIP is, just general overview of what those programs are? We hear those letters of alphabet thrown out a lot, but explain what they are.
So, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, that's HUD, that's one abbreviation, right? They provide funding to us under the Community Development Block Grant, that's the CDPG program. The Home Investments Partnership Program, that's the home program, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program, that is the HOPWA program. So, with CDPG, and we can do a separate work session where we'll go over what's eligible and what's not eligible under each of these funding sources. CDPG is one of the most flexible funding sources that we have. You can do housing, you can do social services, you can do community facility development, you can do economic development. So, there's a variety of different variations of what you can do utilizing CDPG funds. It's our most flexible funding source that we receive from the federal government. Our home program, that's more geared towards housing, right? And that's, again, it's still a federal program, and you can do a housing construction, down payment assistance with it, you can do rental assistance with that funding source. And it's a little bit more stringent, but it's merely geared towards housing. Our HOPWA program, that is a program that we administer on a countywide basis, and that provides rental assistance to individuals with AIDS. And because we are the largest municipality in Palm Beach County, West Palm Beach, we administer it on behalf of the county. And then, of course, we have our SHIP program, that's a state program, and that is a State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program, and that's, again, geared more towards housing. You can do housing construction, housing development, you can do rehabilitation and down payment assistance.
Thank you.
Was that a good overview? Okay. So, I really want to talk to you about some of the great projects that we have underway, one of which is the Georgian Gardens apartment. We broke ground on this project a year ago, and look where we are now. We are looking, hopefully, Mayor, to have a groundbreaking, I'm sorry, a ribbon cutting in December. That's what we're shooting for, latest in January. This project is a partnership with Urban Related. It's providing 87 units of affordable rental housing to seniors, and we've only provided a very small, minimal investment, which was over $600,000, and probably some development incentives. And as a result, we will have 87 additional units for seniors in the city of West Palm Beach. Another project, which is our Assistant City Administrator, Armando Fana, he worked really hard on this project, so this is one of his favorites. It's an affordable rental housing project in the Northwood area, and it's going to be providing 36 units of affordable housing. We've invested $1.1 million of funding, plus some incentives. Again, we broke ground, I believe, Mayor, it was the day after you were selected, elected Mayor-elect. So, that was the day of that groundbreaking, and look, here we are, September 2019. Look how much progress we've made in that project, and we're hoping to have the project CO'd sometime in January.
Before you go off of that, what impact, hopefully, there'll be no impact, but Jerome Golden, I guess, is in some financial distress, so would that have any impact on this project?
And no, I mean, there's going to be a transition plan, and we'll be working with Jerome Golden to see how that's going to go over the next five years, but, you know, this project, we're, it's a tax credit project, so it has restrictions for 15 years where it has to remain affordable. So, we'll have to work those details out with Jerome Golden.
Thank you.
The Home at Tamarind project, this is a project off on Tamarind Avenue. It's a partnership with Gulfstream Goodwill, and it is providing six units of affordable housing for individuals with special needs. We provided some land donations, a small, minimal investment of $250,000, and we are hoping that this project would be completed late this year, beginning of next year. And again, you see just how much progress has been made over the last six months or so. The Arts on Broadway project, this is a workforce and affordable rental housing project off on Broadway. It is a partnership with Crisis Housing Solutions. We are providing a loan, hopefully, should City Commission approve this loan, in the amount of $300,000. We've donated the land and some incentives, and it's going to result in 52 units of affordable rental housing in our city. Mary Place Estates, this is a project where we provided $605,000 in investments. It is a partnership with the Housing Authority, which consists of four single-family homes and 12 townhomes. The townhomes is also a partnership with Polte Homes. That's, the development of that has been somewhat delayed, so Armando wants to say something.
Just to clarify, it's actually 12 single-family homes and 36 townhomes.
Okay, there we go. Thank you for that. I don't know how I missed that, but, and four of those homes have already been developed, so they should have, we should have a CO in November of next, next month, actually. One of the things that we do, you often hear us a lot, what we do is donating land to nonprofit organizations. Under construction now or under development, we have about 19 additional lots that are being developed in our city, and this is through partnerships with Habitat for Humanity and Neighborhood Renaissance. The CRA has also donated lots to these organizations so they can develop affordable housing. Oftentimes, we provide incentives for this project, for these projects, and of course, some home funding. Some additional projects that we have underway, we have two small projects with the Arc of Palm Beach County. They provide supportive housing to elderly individuals with special needs. We're going to be doing some rehabilitation in their current site at 322 10th Street. This is a historic structure that needs some work. They are on a very limited budget, so we're going to be providing some funds to do some rehabilitation on that, on that site. And of course, a few weeks, few months ago, you approved the donation of a property on Manning Avenue, and they're going to be developing a brand-new structure, very similar concept to the one on 10th Street, and that's going to house an additional six units of affordable housing. One of the projects I'm particularly very excited about, it's the redevelopment of 1600 North Australian Avenue. That location currently houses the Sickle Cell Foundation. We have already selected a contractor that's going to demolish the structure, and we are already working with procurement to procure services for an architect to design this facility. This is also going to house a new Vickers House facility, and the way that we, our vision, is that it would be a hub where we, a community resource center slash hub, where we will have multiple nonprofits in that area, in that location, excuse me, to provide a variety of services to our community. And we are, we're hoping that project will be completed in spring 2021. South Olive Tennis Center renovations, we're working with engineering on this project. We've allocated some federal CDPG dollars to that project. Hopefully, the tennis center renovations will be completed October of 2020.
When do you expect those to begin?
The South Olive?
Yes.
It's currently underway. I just got an update this morning, and this is the new timeframe, that it would be completed in October of 2020. So, what do we have underway? We have a variety of initiatives surrounding the development and preservation of affordable and workforce housing. Of course, we're prioritizing our partnership with RISE on a variety of programs and resources. We've donated some land to RISE, again, for that Manning Property Avenue that was donated to RISE. We're going to be setting aside some funding for down payment and closing cost assistance in that area, so we're working with various organizations on the RISE initiative. There is another project, The Grand at Rosemary Ave. I know most of you have heard it. It's going to provide 287 units of work, and 190 of those will be workforce housing units in the historic Northwest. This is a $70 million investment. We're working with affiliated development and, of course, through the Community Redevelopment Agency. You will have future discussions on that project, but that's something that HCD is supporting. The Macy's site, we've set aside some units for affordable, I'm sorry, for workforce housing. We're partnering with Related Group on that, so you expect to see that in the forthcoming months. The Avernia site, this is a city-owned property here in downtown. Our goal is to develop a mixed-income housing project, again, in downtown. We're going to be putting it out to bid, selecting a developer, and someone to work with us on this project. We're having multiple discussions with various developers citywide on how can we partner to set aside units for affordable or workforce housing. So, that's a discussion that we're currently having. I'll tell you this, some developers have made contributions to our Housing Trust Fund in lieu of providing workforce housing on their sites, so that funding could be utilized for all of these other workforce housing projects that we have underway. Come, I'm sorry, come sometime November, December of this, of this year, we're going to reopen our residential rehabilitation program. We currently have an RFP out to select a nonprofit partner that would partner with us to administer this program, so there's quite some interest from our nonprofit organizations. And we're also going to reopen our home purchase assistance program.
Excuse me, Ms. Ferriero. We have a question from Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, and thank you, on your last slide, on the side. Working with things like the RISE initiative and referring to developers submitting dollars into the Housing Trust Fund, is there a way, I know during strategic planning, we had talked about looking at the inventory of houses that we have that could be rehabilitated. Could we potentially put that into a program that's a bit more organized, where we had neighbors that were volunteering to kind of take a look at what the inventory is we have in abandoned homes, homes that are ready for demolishing and, you know, rebuild, as well as just some that need some rehab, so that we can take that existing inventory of homes and rehab those? And I understand, it sounds like we have pockets and semblances of that program, but I guess I would leave to administration and to HCD to say, you know, can we partner with the neighborhoods in some way to try to put that into a formal program of identifying what that inventory is so that we can address it?
Right, so that's part of the workforce housing ordinance that we're working on with, with Development Services. So, what that would state, that in lieu of a developer providing, let's state, workforce or affordable housing on their site, they would be a contribution to the Housing Trust Fund, and we would use those dollars for, and then we're trying to establish what that would be used for, and one of the criterias, or one of the things that we're going to use it for, is to provide some sort of, you know, looking at our housing stock and how can we better and preserve our housing stock. So, that is something that we're considering as we develop that program.
Can I just?
Yes.
Just add to that, working with the RISE initiative, they're actually going, they're doing surveys of households, they're going, they're knocking on doors. So, one of the things that we're doing, well, as we're working with, with the RISE initiative, and that includes multiple neighborhoods in the north end, is then trying to identify the individuals who most need rehab, and then targeting those. So, there is, there is a method with, in terms of how we're working with RISE and identifying those particular homes.
Great, and thank you for that, and I think those existing homeowners are, are a keen focus that we should be looking at, but I think to take that to the next level is looking at those, we have a lot of homes that have been inherited, where families don't live in the area anymore, and so what happens is they tend to be run down and dilapidated. So, if we could be proactive in reaching out and saying, hey, look, we have a program by which you can get this property back up, rehabbed, and potentially owned by someone else, or, or come up with a method to make sure that that property still does not take the other neighboring properties, become a nuisance, reduce their property value, et cetera.
You make, absolutely. One of the reasons, partly, one of the reasons why we're partnering with a local nonprofit is so that they can do that, because we do have our residential rehabilitation program. Again, we're putting that out to partner with a nonprofit, so they can do that outreach. They can knock door-to-door and state, hey, this is a program that you may be able to utilize, so not just on the RISE area, but also citywide and other areas in our community.
However, what you're saying would take a change in, in our strategy, because we own, right now, we only do owner-occupy. What you're talking about is non-owner, non-owner occupied. This is either a house that was inherited, it's abandoned, or it's not occupied at the moment, so that, that would take a, we would have to change our strategy to do that, that we've submitted to the state.
I guess I would, I would ask that we look at that in addition to, because I think the work you're doing now is great, but if we could find a way to look at that in addition to everything that you're looking at owner-occupied, I think that would be beneficial.
Absolutely.
The other thing I'd like to see you work on, I know we're updating our website, and it would be great if somewhere, and you could work with the website designers, if people could just click a button on our website and see exactly the, the projects that HCD is doing, so that will provide, I mean, this information is so good and it's so helpful, but we don't do a good job of tooting our own horn about all of the projects that we're engaged in. And so, one of the things I'd love to see, and not just for HCD, but for other departments, when they have ongoing projects, is somehow have the, the website designed in such a way that people can easily access that information by going to the website. So, Kathleen, I know you're somewhere, whoever's designing it, let's get that word to the website designers, so that will help us tell our story to our residents.
So, on the homeless and social service realm, we are continuing, of course, our outreach to the homeless, and we haven't, we're working to enhance our partnerships. So, currently, the city and the DDA, we have two separate contracts for homeless outreach with The Lord's Place. So, we're like, why do we have to have two separate contracts for the same service? So, the DDA and, and the city are coming together to put one pot of funding together so we can contract with The Lord's Place to provide, I'm sorry, outreach to our homeless populations. One of the things that we ask The Lord's Place to look at is to partner with the Mental Health Association of Palm Beach County. We had a great meeting, for them to incorporate a mental health component into their outreach. That could be, we're, we're waiting for the proposal, but that could be either having a caseworker that does on-street outreach that has that mental health background, or an LCSW, so including that as a part of our outreach. We're working to enhance our program in that way. We're also finalizing a reporting tool for the public, where they can report homeless activity that would come to the city, and we would be able to address whatever concerns they may have and follow up with them. So, we're working with GIS to provide that in the forthcoming month or so. From a real estate management perspective, we continue to identify city-owned, city properties that we can, in essence, sell or donate to nonprofit organizations for development of housing. We are also going to bring forward to you a lease management policy. The city currently has about 20, 30 leases, and we're hoping that this lease management policy provides a framework for how we administer and enter into leases, not just the ones that we currently have, but any future negotiations moving forward. We're also going to be evaluating and monitoring all of our leases, just to make sure that we're all in compliance, and, and that everyone is adhering to the terms and conditions of those leases. And of course, our administrative functions, we have a huge workload coming ahead in that realm, the development of our workforce housing ordinance. We're working with Development Services Commissioner Shoff. So, we'll be presenting that to you in the forthcoming months. We have our five-year HUD consolidated plan, that is a lot of work in terms of collecting data, and in kind of developing a framework for how we're going to allocate our resources in the city of West Palm Beach over the next five years. That's a lot of public outreach, a lot of working with local organizations, with the community, just to state, these are our needs, this is where we need to go in the next five years. And then, of course, our annual action plan, that's a part of our five-year consolidated plan, that's all due to HUD, August 15th of next year. So, you're going to see a lot of that, and, and we're going to be taking a lot of feedback from the people in this room and from the members of our community. And so, that concludes my presentation of what HCD currently has and what we're working over the next 12 months, and if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Commissioners? Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. What an amazing and comprehensive presentation. I appreciate that, and it seems like we are doing a lot in the city, so Mayor, I echo your comments about making sure that our residents realize all of the resources that are available, whether that's through our website or other communication methods. I have two questions. One, a very detailed question is, can you talk a little bit about the evaluation and monitoring, or the, the management of the workforce housing that we're, you know, supporting, requiring, requesting, whether it's in development that the developers put in, or that we're helping to fund? And then, my second question is, you know, how are we doing citywide as it relates to workforce and affordable housing? I mean, we definitely hear that this is an issue statewide, throughout the country, but it seems like we have a lot of great projects, but I'd like to know, is this just a scratch in the surface for West Palm Beach, or is this really making a dent?
Excellent. Okay, so to answer your first question, as it relates to monitoring, so anytime, whether we give $5, or whether we give $1 million, right, we have requirements set forth by either our federal funding sources or our state funding sources, that these projects have to remain affordable for a specific period of time. It could be anywhere from 15 to 20 years, right? So, what do we do? We put, of course, a restriction on the property, right, which would indicate that X amount of units would have to remain affordable for X, Y, and Z timeframe. So, what are we required to do? We're required to, on an annual basis, go out and monitor each agency or each developer so that it could, to indicate or to show that they are meeting the requirements of the agreement that we have in place. So, what we do is, of course, we do a desk audit, review all of their rent rolls, we'll go out there and review their income certification, making sure that the people that they're putting into these housing units meet the specific income criteria. We go in and we inspect the units, making sure that they're habitable, right? You've received assistance, are the units habitable? So, we have to do that on an annual basis. And then, of course, for our local funds, which is funds that we establish, you know, our regulations, we establish our own local laws, we are, we try to mirror the same policies that the state or the federal government put in place. So, it's very comprehensive, and I'll tell you, the more units we develop, the more we have to monitor, so that's where a lot of our efforts are going to be going into. And I know we talk a lot about development, 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 but we don't often talk about preservation, and making sure that we preserve these units so that they maintain affordability for the specific timeframe. That's just as important as it is to continuing to develop newer units. Does that answer your first question?
Yes.
All right, so going on to the second one, which was related to, wait, refresh my memory.
The bigger picture.
There we go, the bigger picture. So, I want to say, over the last five, four years, we've developed over 500 units of affordable housing throughout our city, which is a significant amount. And when I say "we," I don't only mean the city, I mean the, the West Palm Beach Housing Authority. We're talking also about Habitat for Humanity, we're talking about Neighborhood Renaissance, we're talking about, you know, nonprofit organizations that come in and do tax credit deals in the city. So, 500, I'm sorry, 500 affordable housing units in the last five years, that's a significant amount given. Is there still a shortage? Absolutely. We still have to continue to seek more funding and look for more opportunities where we can continue to provide affordable housing, and of course, preserve them. Remember that we have affordability periods, 15, 20 years. After 15 or 20 years, those, those properties could essentially become market rate. So, we keep producing, right, but we have to make sure that we, we focus on, on preservation as well. So, is there definitely a need? Yes, I can tell you that, I'm looking at Lisa Kim from Vickers House, and the struggle is, how do we house individuals, right? We have stagnant incomes who have fixed incomes, how do we house them when one-bedroom rents are going for, you know, 11, 1200? If that's all you're making on a monthly basis, how do you house these individuals? So, you know, the, we're making a significant, a significant impact on that. I, I believe that we still need to continue on this route. It's an ongoing issue that we have throughout our city, throughout the nation, but I am confident in saying that the city, we're headed in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have the questions.
I have a quick question.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation, obviously. Lots of great things are happening. I think I know the answers to this question, but I feel the need to ask it. When we surplus or give property, city-owned property to nonprofits?
Correct.
Do we ensure, as the homes are being constructed, for example, many decades, maybe at least, at least a decade ago, I know that infill homes were built, and I don't know all the particulars, but in the historic Northwest with no back doors. Obviously, that happened before this, you know, several commissions ago, several administrations ago. I don't see how that happened, but it did. Do we ensure that issues like that, you know, are, you know, as these folks are constructing these homes, it still needs to be a home?
Right.
A home with one entrance, just my opinion, is no good. Do, can you talk a little bit about that, how we monitor that, or do we have a role in that as a city, if we're surplusing the?
Of course, absolutely. We're giving the land, you, we have, say, in, in the design of the properties. So, we have criteria, development criteria in our contracts of how they have to develop these, you know, these units, and so that's, that's stated in the contracts. And of course, when we go out and we monitor the properties while they're in construction, we verify that these, you know, that there's certain design standards that are incorporated.
Can I assume we, we would not support homes being built with no back doors?
I, I, does that even meet Florida building code? I'm not even sure.
They exist in historic Northwest, plenty of them. And again, that's not throwing stones, it's just, I wanted to call that out. I think it's important, and so I'm assuming, I thought I knew the answer to that question.
Yeah, I'm pretty certain that it's not the case with, with any of the properties that we're working on.
Jennifer, one question I have, are we looking into any kind of rent control or stabilization situ, in other words, we have in some neighborhoods, some, some homes that probably need multifamily units, that probably need work, et cetera. In exchange for bringing those up to code, do we have, have we thought about any plans whereby, for a period of time, the rates, the rental rates would stay the same in exchange for, I don't know, if it'd be tax abatement or something, so that, you know, and this goes to your... for, I don't know, if it'd be tax abatement or something, so that, and this goes to your thought about continuing to have a sustainable supply--
Right.
--of affordable housing options in certain neighborhoods. So I know in other cities, they will incentivize an owner of a multifamily unit to make certain improvements, but they extract from that owner a promise that, for a period of time, 10 years, 15 years, the rents will not exceed a certain amount, so we could continue to have upgraded housing in those areas, modified housing in those areas, but, you know, with that would be an assurance that we would continue to have some affordable housing options there. Have we looked at anything like that?
Yes, so anytime we give any funding, right, especially for either development or preservation of housing, right, there are certain rent restrictions. So based on that person's income, there are certain maximums of what they can pay towards rent. So that's part of our monitoring, when we go out and making sure that their rents don't exceed a certain threshold, right? So we have that in place. One of the things that has happened in the past, and why we have to be careful with that, is we have worked with various landlords, right, that don't necessarily understand the requirements of what they're signing up for for the next 15 years. They don't understand that they have to certify that person's income, right? They don't understand that, hey, for the next 15 years, you can't exceed these rents, right? So we want to make sure that the people that, or the organizations that we partner with have experience in affordable housing. We've done it with, you know, landlords throughout the city, and it's really caused us a headache, Mayor, and so we want to be cautious of who we partner. But yes, that is the, anytime we do any sort of rental, we have those restrictions. And unfortunately, or fortunately, we are, we have expended a lot of our local funds, our state and federal funds for rental housing, so we have a shortage of that, so we're hoping to find some mechanisms to get additional funding, so we can continue to do that.
I further add to that, because we really want to leverage the private sector funds as much as possible as well, and as Jennifer said, in the past, before us, we were subsidizing slum lords in many cases.
Yeah.
So we want to be careful with that, and as an example, there's a project right now that's the income restrictions, the elderly project, income restrictions that HUD had in place have expired, it was a 40-year requirement, it needs substantial rehabilitation, so we're working with the owner of that project, the Housing Authority and us, to try to leverage as much as we can and help preserve that project. It's 200 units of elderly housing that could easily go away. So that's an example of a lot of bang for our buck that we're going to target.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Well, again, thank you very much for that fine presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, item two, discussion of artificial turf regulations, Mr. Green?
Yes. Mayor, before we leave housing, real quick, I just wanted to mention, we've been working a lot with HCD and Jennifer and Armando. We made two applications to the Urban Land Institute, if you're familiar with them, they are a national organization, so we made two applications for something called our Leadership Project, and the Leadership Project is basically, they provide us expertise on any scenario we desire. So we made two applications, they accepted one, and the one we were seeking was assistance in coming up with housing incentives and initiatives as part of the, my chair is sinking.
You want to know why?
I know why, Mayor, you don't have to tell me. But anyway, we were fortunate to just get an engagement letter that LA is looking at now, so their experts in the field are going to be working closely with us and trying to come up with incentives, so some of the things that Commissioner Shof mentioned, we've been discussing for some time, but we're going to tap into this expertise, no charge to the city, so LA is looking at that now, but I'm excited--
It's great news, thank you.
--that they can help us with that, but--